Good evening, everybody. Just make sure I get that. Welcome to, oops, sorry. We are at a meeting of the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee. It is Wednesday, April 26th, and it's 7:00 PM. We are at the Charlton Middle School. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will take a moment of silence. Okay, let's move on. We have the consent agenda items. Does anybody have any of the consent agenda items that they would like to pull out tonight? No? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I can't see Pauline.
Yes, Pauline.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to communications. Does any of our, did any of our committee members have any communications that they'd like to talk about? No? Okay. We'll move on to our student representative report. Ms. Olivia Lombardi.
Hello. Lots been happening. Shepherd Hill, we got a couple of things going on. The music department, Grady's Festival, May 5th. We're also going to Six Flags, which I'm excited for. Spring Fling Dance Saturday, May 6th, 7:00 to 10:00. They're selling tickets right now. Go buy a ticket. Prom tickets going on sale, $90, casino themed. I bought my ticket today. Kids going on a foreign language trip. They came back, they had a really great time. My friends had a lot of fun. Saw pictures online. My friend, her hair got eaten by a monkey. Oh, my phone turned off, one second. It was, it was really funny. It was really, really funny. May 12th at 13 is the Disney Dinner. Bring young kids, $5 for kids 10 and under.
What time is that later?
Ooh, it is at, I want to say starts at 5:00? I didn't write that down. My bad.
If you get that information from a friend and want to let us know later, that would be good.
I got you.
Okay, thanks.
AP exams next week. Y'all got this. Go for the fives. Senior class trip to Block Island Wednesday, May 31st. And the senior banquet is June 1st. The district art show at Shepherd Hill. All are welcome. May 5th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Go to the district art show. It's awesome. That's it.
We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, at school committee, I do have just not a lengthy report this evening. And the first one is, I know that this will be talked about later, but I have something to share. This evening marks a transition from our valuable experience for the Dudley Charlton Regional School District leadership team. This is Ms. Jamie Terry's last meeting as a member of the DCRSD School Committee. Thus, I write to express my sincere gratitude to you for your service as a member of the DCRSD Board of Directors/School Committee. Your hard work, dedication, and commitment to the education of Dudley Charlton Children has made a significant impact. Your vision and passion for public education created a better future for all students. As the superintendent, and I speak for other administrators, we are grateful for your unwavering support of our schools, teachers, and staff. Your willingness to listen to concerns, address our needs, and make tough decisions shaped our educational community. While your current tenure is ending on the DCRSD School Committee, I do not feel like this is a goodbye in any way. I am confident that your leadership will be present beyond the school committee, and who knows, maybe you will decide to run for seat again. Who knows? You made a difference, and we appreciate everything you have done and will continue to do to make our schools the best that they can be. Thank you, Ms. Terry.
Thank you very much.
Next, this, this is our first week back from the spring vacation, which, from my perspective, everybody needed. Our staff and students are ready to embrace the remaining seven weeks of school. We have a lot of events coming in the next several weeks, so I respectfully ask people to look for building-based communications as to what's going on in their students' or child's school. Very important, while we enjoy the culminating events of 2022, 2023 school year, we are aware that there are pressures and questions that will arise. We appreciate a proactive approach from parents and caregivers, so we want to reinforce a DCRSD communication promise, that we have a communication promise for parents in our community. If you have a question regarding your child in a particular class or subject, please contact the classroom teacher. From there, feel free to contact the building principal or an administrator. For questions regarding specialized instruction, please contact your child's special education coordinator. And lastly, if you feel that your question is unresolved, you are welcome to contact a district administrator. As, as a school district, we will work collaboratively to provide the answers you seek as parents over the next seven weeks. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, Olivia covered some of this, but Shepherd Hill graduation is June 4th, 2023. Obviously, all school committee members are welcome. Not only welcome, but as, will have a presence there, I'm sure, at 1:00 PM at DCU Center. And then, if we have no further unexpected school closures, had to put that disclaimer in there because you just never know. There was hail yesterday in our state, so who knows? The last day of school for all students is Wednesday, June 14th, and it is a half-day of school. So just for everyone to mark their calendars regarding that. And that concludes the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. And we will move on to public comment. I will take the first public comment for myself, I will say. I am Kathy Carmignani in Dudley, and I just want to say to our staff, to our students, you know, yesterday's vote was a hard one. But I don't want us to take that vote as a negative. Because I think what it, when we had our meeting in April with the town, what we heard from them was that they do want to support the schools. They just couldn't, I think there were a lot of people that financially couldn't meet the mechanism we gave them. So I think, you know, we're going to work with our town and come up with some possibilities and, and go again and, and really support what the townspeople are asking for. So I just want to make sure that people understand that, and I don't want people to leave thinking that the town is against the schools, because I don't believe they are. They're not. Thank you. Do we have anybody else? No, really? Okay. We will move on to new business. A is consideration for our viable curriculum resources for the middle school science. Dr. Ackerman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could at this time, could I invite our team up to the front table? So, I just publicly wanted to thank the team for-
Do you want to hold on just a minute?
Sure.
Olivia? Why don't you go sit over next to Ms. Pansec? I just don't want you to feel like you're not part of the conversation. Great. That way, we have a space for you. Perfect. Okay, sorry.
So the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like for the team members to introduce themselves. Then I will provide a brief overview of our process. And then I would like to just turn it over to the teacher team and the administrative team to offer their perspective and to take questions from the committee. I'm respectfully requesting this evening that, for a positive school committee vote, to adopt new high-quality instructional materials for grades 6 through 8 science. But before I begin, just pleased if we could start to my left.
Chris Starshewski, Principal at Dudley Middle School.
Julie St. Francis, Science Teacher, Grade 8 at Dudley Middle School.
Shannon Murray, 7th grade Science Teacher at Charlton Middle School.
Dean Packard, Principal, Charlton Middle School.
There are a couple of other members on, on the team. One, two were unable to be here this evening. One has actually a wonderful event. She's getting fitted for her wedding dress. And the other, today she was a gamer, but she didn't really have much of a voice, so she said she would not be able to attend this evening. So I, again, thank you for your time and for your consideration. And if I could, if people want to follow, I just have a few slides up on the, on, on the projector. So again, respectfully requesting to onboard new high-quality middle school science, grades 6 through 8 curriculum. I wanted to speak a little bit to our process. So back in September, we formed a team representative of grades K through 8. We had membership from all grade levels. We learned fairly quickly in our process that grades K through 5 were in a different place than grades 6 through 8. K through 5 is currently in the second year of CKLA, and the process has been wonderful, but it's been a lot of work. And teacher voice in that process really expressed a desire to perhaps slow down a little bit for this year. So as teacher feedback was really critical to our process, we wanted to respect that request. Secondly, in the K to 5 grade band, there currently was not a fully approved set of instructional materials. So really, our focus turned to grades 6 through 8. So in our research process, we discovered that there were two options that met the Ed Reports criteria for all green. One is Amplify Science. The other was Open SciEd. Amplify, when we got an initial quote, was a six-figure investment. Obviously, within the larger fiscal context, we soon learned that that was not a realistic possibility. But we did learn that Open SciEd with grant funding options could be an option for us. Not only does it meet the Ed Reports all-green criteria, but there were multiple grant opportunities that we could apply for that perhaps could fully fund an implementation process. So throughout this year, the 6 to 8 team attended open houses. Some members attended in Fall River. Others attended in Plymouth, and I know our team will speak a little bit to that in more detail. We had internal meetings throughout this year, basically on a monthly basis, sometimes more frequently. We also met to connect with content specialists from Open SciEd and the folks at Boston College who were funding the grant. So after a lot of discussion, open house meetings, and conversation, the team universally agreed that we should move forward with the grant process. So the Dudley Charlton Regional School District submitted an application for both the Boston College Grant and the DESI Grant. So to let the committee know, the Boston College Grant covers all the instructional materials, all the professional development, any and all teacher stipends related to the, excuse me, to the process, and all substitute teacher costs connected. The DESI Grant, again, as we have partnered for the last couple of years with DESI and other curricular initiatives, we were provided with what they would call a competitive advantage for being in the network. The DESI Grant would support any implementation activities connected to an improved program, which Open SciEd is. So we were pleased to announce that we were successful. So the team received $125,000 grant from Boston College, a $36,000 grant from DESI. This grant will cover the cost of implementation for Open SciEd over three years. So our plan will be to onboard two units a year over a three-year period with professional development interspersed in between. We'll be part of a network. We'll be provided a content specialist, and we'll really give all of our educators the full opportunity to ask questions and to really deeply understand the materials. So at this point, I just would like to turn it over, and I'll, I'll start with Principal Starshewski and move on to the left. And just if the committee had questions for folks and the folks wanted to share their perspectives, I think that would be helpful.
Thanks, Dr. Ackerman. As we entered into the curriculum review process, it became really clear that having, you know, multiple voices and eyes on potential products to utilize was really essential. And, you know, two, two shining stars, you know, over here to the left really do represent that teacher voice and perspective tonight. What we'll find as we enter into this discussion is, I like the term competitive advantage relative to the grant, because I really do feel that Open SciEd is going to give our students a strong competitive advantage when partnered with the Project Lead the Way modules that we engage in at the middle school level, grades 6 through 8. PLTW really addresses the tech and engineering design process and already has students engaged in higher-order questioning techniques, how to investigate problems of real-world application. And Open SciEd is a very inquiry-based model where it leads students, and you'll hear more about this, on a storyline through the standards and through the investigative process to understand science at a deep level. It's going to require our students to learn how to have scientific discourse in a positive way, in a productive way, but it's also going to stretch our educators to be able to become less the sage on the stage and become the guide on the side to help facilitate that learning process. So I'm very excited about this, and it's a great complement to our HMH Into Math program that really does foster a lot of inquiry-based approach to teaching and to learning. So it'll be a very good complement as we really start to ramp up the instruction at the middle level in preparation for high school.
Chris didn't leave me much to say, except for the fact that there is-
We do this all the time.
-a fiduciary responsibility on our part here, and I purposely, purposely want to thank Dr. Ackerman. He's done a really nice job of keeping us informed along the way, and more importantly, create a roadmap that just kept us all moving in the direction that we needed to go. With our initiatives of UDL this year and shifting the way that students are learning the experiences they're having in a classroom, this is going to fit right into that middle of the fairway of what we're trying to accomplish from a mindset, from a teacher perspective. And that is really exciting for us, because what it does is it shifts the experience that the children are going to have in a classroom as they become facilitators of their own learning, as Mr. Starshewski said. And I think that's exciting also for teachers, because it begins, the group of science teachers are going to have that opportunity to begin to lead the way and pilot what that's going to look like. And I think you're going to see student engagement be off the charts with this as well, and I think that's a really exciting thing for children and for teachers altogether. I'm going to pass it along to our science teachers here now with us, so they can speak a little bit about what it looks like from, from their lens. Shannon?
So we're really excited to bring this onboard, if it's approved, for a lot of reasons. One of the first ones being the way that it spirals from 6th to 8th grade and how well they're able to fine-tune their skills before we send them off to high school, where they're going to narrow down different types of science that they're more interested in, if that's a path that they choose. That was our, one of the main things that we were looking for was something that will build from 6th through 8th grade to the point where, once they get to 8th grade, we can focus a little bit more on content, because the skill stuff, it's there and it's ready for them. Another thing we're really excited about is the amount of buy-in that the students that we saw in Plymouth had to this program. They, it's, it's a whole storyline. It's not like photosynthesis is blah, blah, blah. It'll talk about, it gives an actual story. So there was one that we saw that we really liked, about this girl McKenna, and the students were actually diagnosing, I think she ended up, was it gallbladder or some sort of mental ailment that, that meant, physical ailment that she had, thank you. And they were using different questioning techniques and investigations to figure out, to narrow down what was really going on with this student. But along the way, we could see as teachers observing in the classroom, oh, that's that standard, oh, that's that standard. And it's just shown in such a real-world, engaging perspective that is really hard to reach in the classroom without those support materials. It takes a lot of, a lot of research and digging in and a lot of planning between all of us, which we're happy to do, but it'll be great to have a program that has that part into it, so we can focus more on the kids and how they're doing with the curriculum.
And echoing what Shannon said, with Open SciEd, with the storyline approach, I really connected with it, because having come from industry, now it's almost two decades ago, but either way, I always struggle year to year, and we were even talking about this right before the meeting, of being able to connect real-world applicability to whatever it is that we're trying to teach. Because we all know, a lot of students will say, when am I ever going to use this? And we are always returning back to, how can we make this relevant? And this curriculum really does that. Related to McKenna, having medical diagnoses, they were looking at actually images, real medical images with scopes going through her intestines, and so you could really kind of see the real-world applicability. And I think that's very, very important. Building also upon what Shannon said about the skills, right? We have noticed a really large kind of gap from COVID not being in the classroom, learning some of those basic data collection and analysis techniques, that this is only going to reinforce and help to kind of return those skills to the classroom. And they'll establish a way of creating a notebook, organizing a science notebook, so that by the time, hopefully, they reach high school, because we do get a lot of feedback from the high school in terms of wanting the students to be able to do a lab report effectively, to be able to communicate effectively scientifically. So hopefully, we can really start to reinforce all those skills. So we're looking forward to it for those reasons, obviously for the students first and foremost, but the professional development, not going to lie, really super excited about the fact that we are going to have that front-loading ability to ask all of the questions, to get the support, to be able to know even collaboratively across schools and with other schools, how we're going to be able to implement this the best way, the most effective way. And yeah, I look forward to watching more than having to lead.
Do you have anything else?
No. If you have any questions, though, please let us know.
Okay, well, I entertain a motion to approve the Open SciEd as our grade 6 to 8 science curriculum. So moved. Okay. Second? Okay.
Who's the second, sorry?
Kelly. I'd open up for discussion.
Thank you again for coming in.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you for taking the time to do all the work, and we appreciate all that it takes. I know it was a year-long process thus far, and it will be, sounds like it'll be a positive thing for our students and teachers to, to put into place, so.
We did ask a lot of questions earlier when we had our subcommittee meeting, so I appreciate you taking the time for that as well. Sounds great.
Great. Do we have any other comments or questions? Olivia, remember, you're always welcome to ask a question, too. Not that you need to, but just in case. Oh, you do?
So, this is the first time I'm hearing about this. So it, it's like a science program based on like, like stories, and then throughout the grades or throughout lessons, there'll be different stories. My thing is like, this is, sounds like a great idea, like obviously having like a solid foundation of a program. It's just, I don't, like, me personally, I'm going into a, a science major in college. I am so bad at like reading stories and like taking evidence out of, like articles. So is there like something in this SciEd to help with that? Because that's something that I struggled with in high school throughout my science career.
So the entire unit is one story. So you know how when you do a unit, you do like a chapter in the book, and you learn about a certain topic? So each unit, instead of saying, like I was saying, this unit is about photosynthesis, you have a whole broad story that you work with for a couple of weeks. So it's just one story. And as you work through each part, it's very, while we say we're going to be, you know, kind of standing back, we're going to be hands-on helping the kids, of course. But as we work through the story, that's where the content kind of comes through. Not sure if I'm saying that quite right, if you're understanding.
Yeah, I get it. Like, I get what you mean, like-
No, I get it, don't worry.
Kind of like an umbrella. The, the story's the umbrella, and then we'll do many investigations throughout and just build upon kind of solving the overarching problem of whatever it's focused on.
Right. So more of a scenario than a story. It's not like reading comprehension where you're, you know, doing multiple choice questions from there. It's a, it's a, it's a scenario, use that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Would you also say, though, that, you know, from our meeting this, today, that it's, you know, it will provide students with more investigatory, like, like their ability to analyze a little bit better at an earlier age, so that by the time you get to high school or you're going through those kind of labs, that you'll be able to do that in a, in a richer manner?
Yeah, the storylines are built to really bring in the scientific method and bring it to life and apply it to a real-world situation. That does last anywhere from, you know, four to six to eight weeks, depending on the breadth of the unit, the grades 6 through 8. We'll be entering into two units in the first year, one in the fall, one in the spring. We'll be utilizing our current science curriculum for the, for the meat of that. In year two, we'll introduce two additional units at each grade level. And then in year three of implementation, we'll have all six units. That'll cover days 1 through 180. So it's a, it's a, it's a dip into the tub initially, but that storyline piece, yeah, it's very different than a, you know, read and choose your own story type piece. It's much more investigative, hands-on.
Can I just ask a quick question that I forgot to ask today? As they have had other schools go through this, have they had any, any feedback as the kids are now entering high school from their high school teachers?
It's a great question. I didn't ask any teachers personally about that.
I don't think that those students had entered high school yet.
Right.
I think the first group had started in 6th grade.
Yes.
Two, three years.
Dr. Ackerman can probably even expand.
I think this, we'll enter the cohort 3, so I think there's not, hasn't been any real evidence yet of how that was translating-
Okay.
-that I know of.
Okay. Yes, good.
So with the nature of the class sizes shifting and the potential for, you know, this year, we might have to adjust this classroom and teachers based on certification might end up teaching science that might not next year. When you do the professional development, is it only with the current science teachers or is this for all teachers?
It is for all science teachers only at this point. However, I did build into the grant and shared as an expectation that there is the possibility of a couple of shifts year in and year out, but those costs and the numbers for PD are covered in the grant.
And then, this is not specific to this program, but I just want to mention it. There's so many of the curriculums that have been introduced lately between the math, the CKLA, and the science are all surrounding 5th grade, and I just have concerns that we're not capturing anything in the 5th grade parts of the school, because they're constantly just the only ones not brought into those new curriculums. And I've seen some concerns from teachers, some concerns from parents, that they're just kind of in their own world with curriculum while we keep bringing all the other grades forward and moving them into a, you know, better and expanded curriculum. I just caution us that we need to be mindful of the 5th grade moving forward.
So if, if there, there, there will be, hopefully, additional rounds of Open SciEd going, going forward, you know, if there's, if there's certainly interest and there is, you know, motivation and, you know, a desire to, to, to do that, we can certainly go back. And especially having now been established in a cohort, I think we'd be more likely to be able to add, add groups.
Great, thank you. Anything? Yep?
I guess that was something I was thinking as well, with the K through 5 being a separate curriculum, how is that, like, what are they learning and how is that going to transition smoothly into the 6th through 8th grade program that is, you know, prepping them for high school? But what about our elementary school students that are going to transition?
It's a completely legitimate question. My, my hope is, is that going forward, now that we've kind of started a cycle of curriculum review and adoption and looking at grants, that we're going to continue to expand that going forward.
If I can just add, we talked about this today at our subcommittee meeting for curriculum. Most of the middle schools that have looked at this are, are 6th through 8th middle schools, and so that's, that's one of the cutoffs. So that's one of the differences. We're not.
And I see that a lot, because a lot of-
And I see that a lot because a lot of middle schools don't start at fifth grade. We happen to be one that does. But I just feel like maybe sometimes that's why they're forgotten about because they're not in elementary anymore. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know it doesn't necessarily relate to this, but it kind of does, too, so.
Thank you, yes, go ahead.
First of all, I don't think fifth grade's ever been forgotten about. I think even through our math research, we, fifth grade was involved in that discussion as well. And I think that as Dr. Ackerman shared, you know, we found K through five was not ready for something to adopt. That doesn't mean that fifth grade's not, they didn't peel off and say, yes, what about fifth grade? So I don't think they've been forgotten about. And I think that there's, you know, one of the things that I, and I was not part of the team, so I apologize if I'm misrepresenting this, but science standards have always been a spiral. It's, you're supposed to do spiral, but the resources never matched the spiral. It was up to the teachers to make those connections. Typically, you bought textbooks that were like, let's say, an earth science textbook, and you had to spiral in and out of it. And it wasn't really, it really wasn't geared that way. This is the first attempt to really have a good spiral from six through eight, which you could expand, will certainly impact the high school, but then build its way down as well. So, you know, one, I don't think fifth grade's been left out of anything. I think that they were always part of a conversation and involved in discussions about adopting high-quality instructional materials. But this is, to me, is exciting from a science perspective that we finally have resources that will match what has been expected around developing, you know, instructional units around spiraling science standards, so. If I'm wrong, just correct me, but that's the one thing that I, sorry. And the only other question I have is Miss St. Francis. I missed my goat the last two, from last, about the last 24 hours. I could have used that screaming goat, so.
Do have it still on my desk.
So, but no, thank you for the work. And it just, I'm excited for the sixth through eighth and the opportunity here. And I do thank Dr. Ackerman, too, for securing, once again, another grant to support the adoption of high-quality instructional materials for the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District.
Thank you. Anyone have any further? Nope, so the.
I actually do have, I'm sorry. But just as, coming from a nurse and not really having something where you said that you actually see like a scope, which at first would be like, eh. But that might help foster some students that are kind of like, hey, that's actually really kind of cool and really guide them. I actually really do appreciate that, so exciting. And thank you.
So the motion on the table is to approve the Open Said curriculum as our grade six to eight science curriculum. All those in favor? And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you, team.
And we're going to move to B, the report of the Director of Finance and Operations, Director Matthew.
Madam Chair, sorry.
That's okay.
B, C, and D are really combined now because of, you know, what transpired yesterday. So can I respectfully ask that E get moved up? And then we can just really just sit in the dialogue of B, C, and D.
We're going to go to E. The Extended School Year and Summer Learning Opportunities, Director Bergeron and Dr. Ackerman.
Your page one, so, without it being numbered.
So we will, again, for the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District, offer a summer learning opportunity for our elementary students. The program will be grant-funded. We learned some lessons from last year, so our dates and our times will very closely mirror that of E S Y. So we anticipate running a program at Shepherd Hill Regional High School and then either Charlton Elementary School or Heritage Elementary School. Again, we will provide busing, we'll provide transportation. We figured the program hours would be roughly eight or eight-thirty to eleven or eleven-thirty. It will be a needs-based program. And we will use the data that we collect from our, from our schools to help drive the prioritization process. But again, we will try to incorporate as many students as we can. An interest inventory was sent out to staff yesterday to gauge interest. The good news is the early returns are positive. We have a lot of robust interest. And we're hoping to, in the next few weeks, develop a more fine-tuned plan.
Can I, can I bring a suggestion to you?
You can.
Okay. One of the things that I keep thinking about is, you know, as our, as our kind of middle school, high school students are in that point where they can't really get a job and they, they're a little too old to go to camp, like what do they do? And I think some of them are really looking for those opportunities to volunteer. And if maybe there's a way that, you know, with an application process, obviously, like if they could volunteer and help as a TA or something like that, I think it would really make some nice connections with those younger students.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So are you all set with?
No.
Again, I was moving over there. Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I am just reporting that E S Y will be running this year for four weeks, four days a week, the same as it was last summer. The dates and the times are in the paragraph that I submitted. One of the things we're changing this year is we're staggering the start times between some of the older kids and some of the younger kids. That'll help alleviate some of the transportation concerns we had last summer. So we're learning from some of the issues we addressed last summer. There was, just to speak to previous conversations around E S Y, its school committee meetings, there was conversation about extending and expanding on E S Y services. With the current fiscal climate, that wasn't possible. I hope to, that my successor continues to explore that because I do think it's an area that we need to build upon. Happy to answer any questions regarding extended school year.
So thanks for cutting off my question automatic.
I predicted your question, committee member.
Why is it only four weeks? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that summer extended school year or any summer support program that we'll have will not be located at either one of our middle schools because we have two roofing projects going on. So we will be utilizing Shepherd Hill Regional High School, Heritage, and Charlton Elementary School.
Thank you, yes, I should have mentioned that.
Yeah, but it's not just you, it's also Dr. Ackerman's supported programs and stuff as well. Those are the facilities that we'll be using, okay?
Will the athletics still be hosting there?
Anything at Shepherd Hill?
They usually have their summer camp at Shepherd Hill. And I know a lot of parents have asked about that.
Again, Shepherd Hill, Heritage, and Charlton will still support programs for the summer. Just the two middle schools will not.
Perfect. Did you, you had a question?
I already answered her question.
Oh, you answered her.
You purposely put it in to answer me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's good, read her mind. Guys, I was just curious, how many students we had do this last year?
I didn't bring the numbers that we had last year with me. We're currently in the process of creating class groups and then verifying with parents whether or not they'd be sending kids this summer. So I can update the committee with numbers if they're interested in seeing them as we get closer to June.
Sounds good. Thank you. And I just want to make sure everyone understands what extended school, the purpose of an extended school year program is.
Sure. Extended school year is for students that receive special education services during the school year that experience significant regression of the skills that they're working on over breaks. So we take data on kids, not just over summer break, but over breaks that occur during the school year to identify those rates. All, all kids lose skills over the summer. It's part of summer vacation. But special education students are particularly vulnerable to go without educational services during this time. So some, some of those kids, not all, they lose way more ground than their peers. So those are the kids that are identified through the IEP process that's requiring the service over the summer.
And if a parent has a question, they should contact their special ed coordinator?
Coordinators, yes, those are the primary contact. And if the issue is not resolved with that contact, they're free to contact me.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody else have any questions? No? Thank you so much. Thank you. We will move back.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
However you want me to do it, the Director of Finance and Operations.
So I'm just going to open up before we get into Mr. Matthew's presentation on this. I mean, obviously, yesterday, you know, we all want to be, we're, we're public educators. We live in a world of optimism. We live in a world of trying to solve problems and come up with the best solutions. We really care about people, we really care about students. I mean, that's really our primary role. So yesterday, as you said, Madam Chair, and thank you for your opening, was that, you know, it was difficult. It was difficult to hear. And I agree, I don't think it's necessarily a lack of support for the schools. I think there was some complexities in there that we need to really try to simplify now. As you as a committee, sorry, I sent an email out to all staff last night as well identifying that. And, and I just want to say and continue to compliment, you know, today, for some of us, you know, sleep wasn't, wasn't an option last night. But for our staff, they, they came in today and they, they did their job. They did an incredible job today, you know, regarding that. So hats off to the Dudley-Chowton Regional Educator Staff, paraprofessionals, nurses, cafeteria personnel. You know, there's, it's been a tough couple of years. And there's, there's still a lot of work ahead of them, but they're prepared for it. And, and they want, they want to invest in what they, what they know is right. And that's the education of students in the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District. So with that said, we're really in a place now where there's really, kind of for school committee, it's not that we weren't prepared for it not being successful last night because we talked about it. We were preparing for that and what that would look like. So there's a couple of steps now that I would recommend school committee to consider moving forward as, as Mr. Matthew presents the factual information here is, one, the surprise news for us, and I'm sorry if I'm taking Mr. Matthew's thunder here, was the House numbers coming in. But there's some caveats in there that we really have to pay close attention to. But that certainly helps us as a school district moving forward and it helps our communities as well with, with the House, and Mr. Matthew will share that. But really, the path, the path forward now, two options. One, prepare for the, the numbers that are available to us out of the community of Dudley, which again, is, it's a yin and a yang, and impacts Charlton as well. It's not, it's not just one community. Or, or two, continue to push forward with what we believe is a level service budget inappropriate for the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District. Now, I don't think there's an answer to that today, but there may be, there would be this evening a request to vote on the newer assessments based off of a level service budget because they did change from the first time we presented these through public hearing and stuff. But we really have those paths. From there, as you know, we've been identifying things in the event that it was not a successful override that we would have on the table for reductions. We, we're going to have, we're going to have to revisit that. But what I would respectfully ask you as a committee is to give us administratively a chance now to process that again and bring that to the first meeting in May. And, and give us a chance to not only work amongst ourselves to come up with a, a very specific recommendation for value now, and also the opportunity for our administrators to talk to their staff. And also the opportunity for us as district leaders to talk to association leaders about where we're going and what that will actually look like. It's not that we haven't had this dialogue, but we're really getting to a point or a apex to really determine this is what it's going to be as far as a final recommendation. So again, I wouldn't ask, I would respectfully ask the committee not to, to push for details tonight to give us a chance to go back because some things have changed. As you know, at the last meeting, we requested an EL teacher, that has to be incorporated now. So give us a chance to work on those finer details and bring those details and a recommendation for a, in exact value at the first meeting in May. And Mr. Matthew will go through some of this stuff and really talk about what that exact value will need to be. Again, along those two paths. The two paths are still level service or a level funded. Remember, level service is taking what we have and moving it forward. Level funded is that we, with, with the lack of resources for the community of Dudley to support a level services budget, it's a level funded budget. So that's what we're going to talk about this evening and kind of have open dialogue regarding that. So at this point in time, do you want the slides first? Do you want to go through your memo or?
Let's go through the memo. And maybe we can put the slides up as we get to the individual versions.
Great.
So if we can start the slideshow and go to page two.
So I'll apologize that the memo came out a little bit late today, but obviously, we're working off of the details that we have. The combination not only of a unsuccessful vote, but also the House numbers that came in, too. So Mr. Matthew will go over that memo. Can you put on the first slide?
First slide.
Yeah. Because we're not, we're not there yet. Okay?
So, as the committee is aware, we did approve an initial budget in March. And if we can go to page two, you'll see those numbers represented there. As you can see, you know, that was based on the governor's budget release with assessments of the town of Charlton of $2.2 million, the town of Dudley, $1.237 million. The Charlton assessment was discussed with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee and recognized as being not something that they could support at that level. And the Dudley assessment was obviously part of the override that was voted down last evening. So moving on to version one, which includes the new House revenues, which to be specific, increased chapter 70 by $30 a student, which was fantastic. And also, for the first, for the second time, rather, in the years that it has existed, funds regional transportation at 100%. And that's, that's a great win for regional schools. It's nice to know that the state is finally living up to its promise. Forty years late, but that's okay. We'll take, we'll take it this year. That's because we really do need it this year, obviously. So version one is utilizing those, those revenues to meet the town of Charlton's 1.9 assessment increase that was approved at the April 5th, 2023 Joint Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee meeting. That lowers the assessment in Dudley to $960,000, 125. And, you know, provides us with level service. And again, a level service budget means that we're not making reductions to current operations. There may be some changes in the line items. So for example, the charter tuition assessment on the cherry sheets went down from the governor's budget to the House budget. But as Superintendent Lamarche already identified, we have an ELL teacher that we had not included in the budget that we have a need for. So there will be some, some gives and takes there. We're also looking at special education, transportation, and making sure that there's a sufficient budget there. And it looks like we may need to transfer some dollars there as well. So again, some, some give and take, some wiggle room, and some changes that will happen in the expenditure side of things. But again, having a level service budget is key and critical and one of the school committee's primary goals. Version two is what was necessitated based on last evening's vote. And that is a far different scenario. It was challenging this morning, even after five cups of coffee, to sit down and put this, and codify this in writing because it was very disappointing news. But in essence, the town of Charlton's assessment, based on Dudley's ability to pay, that was discussed prior to the override of actual reduction to their assessment of $34,159. So Charlton's assessment would have a similar reduction, down to $746,001. That would require a $1.976 million reduction to our budget. That's not $197,000, I didn't misplace a comma, unfortunately. That's $1.9 million. That is better news, obviously, than what we were looking at prior at 2.7 and still not meeting all of our, all of our increases. So, you know, it's, again, better news, but still not anywhere near good news. So as a result, we obviously have to continue conversations with the Board of Selectmen in Dudley to see what direction they're going in. You know, will, are they going to look to take feedback from the taxpayers and, and, you know, look at different versions of what the override might look like to bring in a total value that is less than what was previously requested? Or are they going to stick and, and say, no, that, you know, we, we've gotten our feedback and, you know, we'll live with the reductions that, that the current budget circumstances force upon us? I would expect that, I believe that they have a joint meeting tomorrow with their, with the FAA. So I expect that we'll hear back from them after that meeting in terms of next steps for us. One of the critical things that we have to keep in mind is part of the number that was voted down last night as part of the override was the feasibility study funding as well. So, you know, that's a number that does need to be included in the assessment for Dudley and for Charlton. Charlton has already identified their funding source. In addition, they've also identified $1.5 million of Opera Funds that they'll use to prepay for the capital projects that were approved in September of 2022. So that's, you know, they're in solid position with identifying their sources of funding for, for everything at this point in time. The, it's clear that the differences between version one and version two are stark. There's no, there's no sugarcoating that, there's no getting around that. The difference between level service and level funding, $1.976 million. And not quite level funding because 2.5% of the base amount of our FY '23 budget doesn't quite match the. doesn't quite match the additional allocation that the town of Dudley had made for us in last year's budget process. That is why we have a slight reduction there. So going forward, I just want to touch upon this. In terms of the capital projects, you know, those were approved, what happened in September of 2022 was that the school committee was authorized to issue debt. We will be issuing bond anticipation notes sometime this summer to ensure that we have adequate cash flow for those projects. And then we'll be issuing permanent bonds once everything is finalized after that, possibly during FY24 or possibly during FY25. But there'll be no need for assessment to the towns in FY24. Again, the Board of Selectmen in Charlton have voluntarily offered to pay off some of it upfront, and that's good. That's sound fiscal management. They have the opera funds that they're not, they need to be used and allocated. So, you know, they'll be part of the assessment going forward. And for the town of Dudley, they're going to have to have a conversation about whether or not to have a debt exclusion vote for those projects, or if they decide that they want to pay for them, you know, within the prop 2.5 levy limit. And same in Charlton for the balance of their assessment and the debt and the capital projects. So as Superintendent Lamarche indicated, you know, we'd like to bring forward the recommended reductions at the next appropriate meeting, and hopefully identify those changes within any other line items and have a clear picture about where we're going for FY24. Even at these late dates, this is a longer process than normal for the budget. Normally, this is the meeting where we kind of wrap up. We say, hey, you know, everybody's in sync. Everybody has agreement. We're in good shape and, or is in good shape as we can hope to be. Anytime that you're making reductions, you're not in the best of shape. But that's where we've been for a number of years. So it's not uncommon territory or unknown territory, just a much larger magnitude this year.
Madam Chair of School Committee, so, you know, we've shared a lot of information about reductions, and so I want to say for tomorrow's, we're meeting tomorrow's administrative team, and I know it's going to be a difficult meeting. But it's safe to say that everything is on the table that we've shared over the last couple of months as far as reductions. Now, originally started at $2.7 million reduction. Now we're roughly at $2 million or $1.9 million. But again, some of the things have shifted a little bit, and we've had to, you know, as Mr. Matthew mentioned, there's maybe a one-off or a position that may be adjusted, or the typical model here, if somebody leaves and we don't fill it, and that may help save us money, you know, that kind of thing. So that's why we need to get to the nitty-gritty tomorrow. But unless I hear otherwise, you know, right now, everything's on the table, and we're going to try to bring to you the best recommendation that is a balanced recommendation for the district to get to $1.9 million. Out of all of the categories, out of all the information, everything that we've presented so far to this point. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at moving forward. Unless, again, unless the committee, you, as Madam Chair of the committee, would like to recommend that, you know, we know, we heard, half-day kindergarten is untouchable. That's not the one that people want. But, you know, what we'll do is we'll prepare a list of our recommendations and also, and then a sub-list of the other items that were discussed over time, that the school committee can contemplate during that first meeting in May to say, you know, because anything that is seen on the list for anybody who says, I don't want that to be on the list, there has to be something to replace it of value, of equal value. So we will provide a sub-list of other categories. So that's why I'm saying everything's on the table, because it will all be, come out in that report. And we'll get that to you as a committee as soon as possible. But tomorrow's really our refinement day, and then we also have to meet with association leadership too, to talk about where we're going with it. And again, it's not that we haven't had that open line of communication. We have, but really, the point of the problem is coming to head. So we really have to address it now and be prepared for that first week in May to share. This was never, you know, it's unfortunate, you know, that, I don't want to go off for too many comments, but there was never anything that we presented that was intended to be a scare subject. This is reality. It's, we always knew it was going to be a large value to reduce, because we don't have a lot of excess in the Dudley-Charlton Regional School District. As I shared at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Monday, our target is always level service. It's always been our target. We don't have a nice-to-have budget process in Dudley-Charlton, at least the four that I've been part of, and from my understanding, all the years prior to that. It's not, it's not a nice-to-have section of a budget process. It's how do we target level service and get the things that we need and improve on what we're doing. And that's what we're going to continue to work on. So, I mean, that's where we're at. We didn't, we were prepared for Plan B if we needed to be, but we were refining that on the hop, and we will have that prepared for the first week in May. But I would, we would recommend that you do vote the new version one, because it's a different assessment than the original one that was voted by school committee, correct?
What, with the committees, if everybody's comfortable with this, I'll share with both towns, the assessments including the capital amounts, okay, that are not listed on here right now, so that they're prepared for that information and they can prepare their warrant and all of that. But let them know that school committee intends to vote on it at the next meeting. And we'll have more information about where the town of Dudley is going as well.
I have a lot of questions and a lot of things I want to talk about, but namely, to that point about the vote, a new school committee member will be sitting at this table at that next meeting, someone who may not have lived this as closely as I have. And so I am prepared to vote version one tonight, feeling that I understand this process. If you feel there's a detriment to doing that, I guess that's my question. Is there a detriment to doing that, since I feel that I could do that and understand what we're voting?
There is no detriment. All it does is incorporates, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
All it does is incorporate the new numbers that we have from the House and try to, in what we, in what we've worked on with the town of Charlton, to bring us to a certain number. It obviously can be voted on again in May, but it solidifies where we are with what we know from the House. There's still, as you see on the agenda, the Senate still has to come out with their numbers, and it has to go to conference committee, and we won't know final numbers till June. But this gives you, this gives you up-to-date what we really have. And from my experience here, it hasn't been uncommon to vote on another, a final, we've finally worked out the nuances with our two communities, and have a budget that we can at least solidify, so we can share with the communities and say, this is where school committee stands right now, and then go from there. Again, to answer Mrs. Terry's question, there's no consequences for voting on version one this evening, because it's different than the initial one that we...
And my perspective would be that it still puts a path forward to our towns, that this is where we still need to be. Now we have new numbers, but this is where we still need to be in order to provide level services to our schools, to our students. And so it still sends a message back that we now have more data from the state, and we are still in this need. Because of yesterday's vote, it doesn't change the fact that this is what we need for our schools. I don't know how else to say that. I'm going to probably be pretty blunt tonight. I mean, that's, this is what we need in order to provide the best education to our students. Do you want me just to keep going through my points since I'm talking already? Or do you want to talk in that?
Do you have a motion?
Okay, sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve version one of the FY2024 budget, as we presented today.
Do we have to specify the assessments?
Read the exact numbers?
We have to specify.
Yeah.
And in that version one assessment, it would be the town of Charlton, $1,899,198. The town of Dudley, $960,125. And then we continue?
Those wouldn't be the assessments. Those would be the increases to the assessments.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're cutting a lot more money.
Okay, fine. Sorry. I apologize. I'm looking at what you gave me here.
No, I know. It's on this sheet here.
Well, now I don't know if my eyes are good enough to read that to you.
So with the chair's permission?
Yes.
So what the committee would be voting on is a revised assessment to the town of Charlton of $16,945,281. And to the town of Dudley, an assessment of $11,030,591.
So moved. Thank you.
All right. Jimmy, will you start discussion?
Okay. Well, my other things aren't necessarily related to that, but if you want it all under that same auspice?
I think you have to relate it to the, to this.
Okay. So I guess my purpose of that is because, one of the reasons is when we were at that question and answer session, the second one that we had that was held in the Dudley Middle School, I felt there were many individuals that came to that meeting, and many spoke to their financial concerns or constraints. But they were, I feel the majority, I went back through my notes again today, and I wrote down notes on every single person that asked a question or spoke. They weren't, they were not saying they would not support the school budget. They were saying they felt it needed to be done under different fiscal steps or setups. And so my intent with this kind of setup is to still say to the town of Dudley, this is still where we need to be as a school district in order to serve our students. And we hope that, you know, we've heard Utown of Dudley residents, and that we want to still tell you where we need to be, but under the setup that you feel you can vote for. That's not a question. But that's, that's my statement. All right, I'll go again. This is a question. Sorry. Rich, you mentioned the feasibility study that it needed to be still spelled out to the town, that we still needed to have a vote for that. Can that be a separate vote, or does it all need to be included, incorporated? And I imagine that's the town of Dudley's decision to make. But can it, is it acceptable to be a separate vote? And so therefore, if the community, if certain residents of the community felt that they couldn't support a feasibility study, yet still felt they could get us to level services, that's something that could happen?
Yes, the town of Dudley could decide to, you know, again, fund the feasibility study through existing funds, stabilization, ARPA, et cetera. It could decide to issue debt for that, which would require both a town meeting approval and a ballot question. Or it could pursue the capital exclusion, which would be an increase to the tax rate for one year. But those are all options available to them. It doesn't need to be tied. It was only tied during, as part of the override because of the town's desire to have one question.
Okay. Then I'll publicly state tonight that one of the things I heard at that question and answer session was that the citizens in the town of Dudley wanted that to be a separate vote, so that they could have their voice heard in a separate manner. I know we don't get to make that decision, but I hope you're listening.
Can I clarify what I thought they meant?
Sure.
I thought, I heard from the citizens of Dudley that they wanted the lowest amount of a tax increase possible, and they didn't, they didn't want to say no to the feasibility study. They just wanted to be able to debt exclude the feasibility study.
Yes, I agree. I heard it that way.
Because they didn't want it to add to their taxes.
Agree. I heard it that way.
Okay.
And Kathy, I'll add that I've heard too, from the citizens of Dudley, that they would like a debt exclusion for the roofs and the feasibility study. And I do have faith that they do want to support the schools, but they want a different plan to go forward.
And I just want to be clear, we as a committee do not decide on that plan.
Right.
We let them know what we need, and they need to decide on that plan.
Thank you.
I have another thing, but it's counter to this motion on the table, so I'll wait and do the motion first. Told you I was going to remark today.
Because I also heard that most people wanted everything debt excluded, that people would support the schools and not necessarily the town. And what I would say to people when I heard that is, we cannot support just the schools. If we want to support our schools, we need to support our towns. We cannot disseminate our services in town just to support our schools. That is not fair to police, fire, and everyone else. And it's really making the town versus the schools. That's becoming very apparent, and that's not what we want either. And so to everyone that supports us, thank you, but at the same time, we have to support our town too. So unfortunately, we go to the town to get our money. If we don't support the town of Dudley, they're not going to have any money to give us. So if we keep doing this year and year and year again, we're going to have to go for constant overrides, and no one wants that. So we have to come up with a better solution so that we can get to a point where we can support all our services within our town.
And I'll just add to that, the people that I heard from do want to support the town also, but they do want a lower amount. They just, so we're going to have to work together to see how we're going to fund the towns and the schools. And that's what Rich and Steve will be doing, right? Working with them, because we can't leave them out. But the people in Dudley, they've always been supportive too, to the town of Webster, the departments. So we'll have to come up with a different plan.
Right.
That's going to suit.
And I would say that I don't think it's just up to Steve and Rich to work with the town. Like, that is something, you know, we really were, all of us worked with the town of Charlton and their board members.
Right.
And we did a great job and really had good conversations. So I think that's something that we as a board need to really consider. One of the questions that I keep getting from people are, what is the total amount of increase that we're getting from the House? And, you know, is, is this $600,197,860 the total amount that we're getting? How much of, like, if it's not the total amount, how much are we putting aside for reserves and why? I just want to make sure we're completely transparent with everyone.
Yeah. So the difference in version one on the regional transportation was $170,696.
Where does that belong? Can you point that out?
If you take a look at the cherry sheets?
Yeah.
You'll see that the value came in at $2.65 million.
Oh, the 2.519. Am I looking right?
That's what's in, that's the revenue included in version one.
Okay.
The cherry sheets should be the last page.
Oh, the last page. Got it.
What was the number you said, Rich?
The 2659 or so. 2689, I'm sorry.
268975.
The line that says regional transportation.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Got it. Okay. Does everybody see that on their sheets? Yes. Okay.
Now, the caveat, which I think Rich and I either alluded to it or said it, is this will be the second time in 40 years that somebody, one legislative branch, proposed 100% reimbursement. I think I joked with Rich is whether they have that on DraftKings yet, as to whether it will come through or not. You know, and if people are waging on that. But it's the second time in 40 years, you know, we, it's great. Well, we're trying to incorporate everything in here to get to the real number that the towns and communities want. But if that swings one way or the other, if that goes down to 75% again, or 90%, that's a swing of, you know, more than $100,000 that we've got to come up with. So it's just, again, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and you can see with that value that almost all of it is in there at that point in time, with the House, in addition to that.
So in my memo, and again, I'm sure, given the fact that it was sent out in the afternoon, not everybody's gone through every word and memorized it, although I argued to. The, there are caveats in my memo about risk and risk management and risk tolerance. Obviously, if there is no additional revenue in Dudley, we have to put every penny of revenue that we have on the table to try to mitigate our reductions as much as possible. But just because we do that in May and/or in June, that doesn't mean that when conference committee approves its budget in July or August, maybe June, but July or August historically, recently at least, that we might not have to go back and make additional reductions. You know, so we could, we could throw everything against the wall now, or we could use 90, roughly 94... or we could use ninety, roughly ninety-four percent of the revenue to meet the target for Charlton. And then, you know, utilize it all for, for version two if, uh, if we have to come to that and, um, you know, again, avoid some level of reductions.
Right. And I just want to make sure that people understood that.
Sure.
Cause I think that's important. Cause that was one of the things at the meeting that we talked about is complete transparency with the voters and the selectmen, so. Does anybody have anything further?
To that point, Kathy, I, I think our board has done a fantastic job this year of being transparent and meeting with other boards in the, in these communities and being present and showing up. And we did that for the override vote. I mean, I feel we have really committed to what our goal was at the beginning of the year for that.
Yes, but I will say that at the last selectman meeting, our, I think that there's a portion of our, our constituency, like, not, like, the, the citizens that are not involved with the schools, that do not feel that they're getting information. And that's not necessarily, like, I, I think we need to think about how we communicate, and as a town, how we communicate that out too. So that was the feedback that we received. Are we ready to go to a vote? Yes.
I have a question. Steve Corones.
Do you want to come to the table, Steve?
Microphone, you need a microphone.
I, I can probably talk loud enough. I think you'll be able to hear me. Steve Corones from the Town Board of Selectmen. Those are some very scary numbers.
Sorry. Point of information. I'm actually deaf in my right ear. And I would really like you to be at a microphone so I can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming tonight, too.
Thank you.
No, 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 this is, this is very important stuff. It was, it was, um, scary, the news that we heard last night, for sure. Somewhat predictable. I gotta be honest, I want to stake dinner out of it, but with the bet that I had, cause I did, it was just too much of a, but I, I thought it was too much of an ask too soon all at one time. That was kind of my opinion of it. The, the timeframe moving forward, from what I'm aware of, is the feasibility study that, we have to write a check for that by June first.
June, yes. We will work with the.
June first, right, right. That's from my understanding, so you guys.
We'll work with Mass School Building Authority to see if we can extend it past the, if it, if it moves from Dudley Town Meeting to their election on June twelfth, we'll see if MSBA will, should be able to work with us for that timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll take your Charlton's check June first, yes.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, but, but it, man, you guys are, you guys are really living in a Rolase moment. I feel bad for you, I really do. It's, it's the, um, so the other part is, the other question I have is, so then Dudley would have to go through another override ballot vote? This, it's not a town meeting issue for them, this is an actual override ballot vote for them, correct?
Respectfully, it's, it's always a two-step process, that's for any, for, to override two and a half and increase in, in the tax, uh, increase in property taxes beyond two and a half percent. It's always a two-step process, which includes a in-person town meeting as well as a ballot.
And, and most of that needs to be done by June first, and we're approaching May first. That's, I know, tough, tough, um, yeah. Well, I, I think we, speaking for the Town of Charlton, we supported it as much as we could have. And you guys saw that meeting and, and, um, we scraped, begged and borrowed to get to, to get to the one point nine. Best of luck, I, yeah, I don't, you'll have to work that out with the Town of Dudley, I don't, and, but, um, yeah. Sad to see this, it, it is. I was really hoping we were gonna be able to get into that, but that's all I had to say. And, but now I understand the process, so there is, there's gonna be another ballot vote in Dudley.
If, if, excuse me, Madam Chair, if the Town of Dudley chooses to do it that way, yes.
And if they don't? I'm al, I'm always tough with questions, but if they don't?
I feel like you may get a really small bill.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Or there's a larger discussion on the town meeting floor.
Yeah. Or at the town meeting floor.
Right.
Which could have happened in Charlton as well. Okay, all right, thank you, yeah.
Kathy, we have a motion on the.
Yes, okay. Um, so the motion in front of us is to accept the, um, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four version one with an assessment to the Town of Charlton in the, in the matter of sixteen million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, and an assessment to the Town of Dudley in the amount eleven million, thirty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Is that all we need? Okay. All those in favor? And the motion is unanimous.
So I'll forward this on to, uh, both towns and include the feasibility amount as well as the additional, um, one-time payment for the, um, capital projects from Town Charlton. And, um, at the next meeting, we'll ask you to vote those additional capital assessments. But for tonight's purposes, I, we thought it was much clearer to, to leave those things out and talk apples to apples rather than complicating things and having to spend an extra half hour explaining why this number changed from this to this. It was much easier to just do it cleanly this way.
Sure. Yes, go ahead, you start your questions.
So, so I appreciate that that's where we need to be. Now, if that isn't end up where, if, if that doesn't end up to be where, I have to ask all my questions tonight, or else I'm coming up as a citizen, so if, um, which I might do anyway. So if the Town of Dudley Board of Selectmen opt not to move forward with another override ballot, is there a, maybe I don't even want to say it that way. If they opt not to move forward with the number that we need to be level services, is there a, is there a way that we're going to provide a middle-of-the-road number so that we're not losing, sorry, I had it in front of me before, the one point nine million dollar, one point nine seven million dollar reduction, um, that this version two shows? Um, meaning if we're not satisfied with just saying, um, this is our, then we're gonna make all these cuts, are we going to come back to them again and say, no, we're not willing to make that many cuts?
Madam Chair, uh, through the chair. Um, keep in mind, again, the reason why we went for an override is because Dudley has informed us that they do not have the resources to support anything beyond a level-funded budget. So, yeah, we can, we can try to continue to work and, and try to get, get to a different number. But that's the reason, that's the reason and the purpose we were going for the operational override, uh, to, to, from the, in the Town of Dudley to support, uh, the schools to move beyond a level-funded budget, which is minus thirty-four thousand dollars.
I understand that. But I, I think that if there are gonna be cuts, they need to be as equ, as equivalent as they can be across municipality and school. And that's, that reduction for our school may not be equivalent across municipality. And does that, I don't know if it's coming out.
No, it is.
Okay.
Through the chair again, that's, that's, that's why when I open up, I talk about two paths. One is to accept the, uh, the, the level-funded approach, or two, to move towards the assessment that we believe is a level service budget, the right budget for us, and, and school committee to still vote on that and bring that to town meeting and town meeting floor. It doesn't mean that the Board of Selectmen will support it, the FAA will support it, doesn't even mean that the voters will support that. Um, or they could maybe support some figure, but that's not, we can't, we can't ask the town to operate, um, yeah, for the schools. They're operating for the town. So, yeah, your question is, is perfectly understood, but again, the, the initial reason why we're even here is because they said they cannot, they, they use opera money to, for the operating budget and said the best that they can do this year is, is level funded. So I don't know if you've heard anything different, or?
No, I, I think, you know, one of the other options, if school committee doesn't re, is not, the assessment that school committee provides is not approved, um, at town meeting, there's always the option for calling a super-town meeting. Uh, but again, it's not as if Dudley is sitting on revenues that they're not using. It, it would be, it would have to be reductions in, in other places for the town.
And, and to be clear to the voters at home, a super-town meeting, can you explain that?
Sure, it's a meeting, uh, called by the school committee, uh, Regional School Committee, of citizens of both towns. Budgets are presented, uh, school budgets are presented. And, uh, if my understanding is correct, as I've not gone through this process, but it's been a unique couple of years, so, um, anything's on the table. Uh, if a majority of voters approve, uh, the budgets that are presented there, then, uh, those assessments are forced on to the towns. And, um, the towns have to then deal with the ramifications in whatever manner they can.
I ask that because the Town of Charl, the citizens of the Town of Charlton have come to me and probably many of you and said, we feel like our hands are tied because we don't even have a vote in what's going on for our own children. And so, that would give them a vote, and it would be the combination of whoever goes out to vote for Dudley and Charlton to give them a voice.
I, I think we're far away from doing that.
Ah, this is my last time at this table.
Right.
So I'm gonna put it all out there.
I just, I would hesitate to, for me, I would hesitate to do that to the citizens of Dudley. I think that we still have work to do. We still have FAA and Selectman are meeting tomorrow to discuss this. We are all, it's a public meeting, we can go. It's at seven? Do you know what time it is?
Usually six-thirty.
Six-thirty? Okay. You know, it might, that might be a good place to go. I know that when we went to the Town of Charlton FAA and Selectman meeting, we were listened to and really they worked with us. So I think that the more we can get there and have our voices heard, the better. But there really is no money. You know, I, I, I think, yeah, Caitlin.
So, I was gonna say, I. And I can't make it tomorrow, so I was just wanting to put that out there. But I don't think it's the Board of Selectmen and the FAA that's the roadblock to getting this out there right now. It's the votes. And so, I think what Jamie.
Can you speak up? She just.
I can't hear you from this corner.
I was, I, I was just saying, I don't think it's the Board of Selectmen and the FAA that's the roadblock to getting this approved. It's the voters right now. And as we already mentioned, the voters want to support the schools. But we're in a really difficult position. And the only thing that I think we can do is, obviously, we just voted on version one, but lower version one down so that it's a lower number if we want the best chance at approval. Version two is what Dudley can afford without an override. So if we go back out for another override and it fails, we're stuck with version two no matter what, because we're basically out of time at that point. No?
For, for clarity, no, that's what Mr. Matthew was saying with Ms. Terry. You, the state has a mechanism where we'd go to one-twelfth of our budget during the summer and have a super meeting. And there, there are additional steps that can, could be taken.
I know, but we're already into the middle of June at that point with our.
Um, I, I never once tried to portray them as easy steps.
No, I know. I know, but I'm just saying. I mean, if we, that's my thought, is if we want this to possibly pass, then we would have to lower version one. But I don't think any of us want to.
See, and I, and I think from that meeting, I didn't hear that they needed to lower version one. I felt that they needed to take off the table the roofs, the feasibility study. And come, and we've come down now on version one.
Agreed.
A lot.
Agreed.
Right.
Because of the housing, the, the housing.
That's for FY twenty-four.
Correct.
And then there's FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. And I know I'm getting into the weeds with this, but, I mean, I don't know. I, I personally took last night's vote as a statement that we're not gonna get to where we want to be. I mean, I, I can't predict if this would pass if we went to another override and took out those capital projects, but we might get it this time, but maybe not next year, I don't know. I just think it was a loud statement last night, and perhaps we need to start cutting.
We've, we've cut for a number of years already.
We have.
So we do not need, respectfully, I'm not saying this at you, but we don't need to cut anymore. We have nothing else to cut. And so, we've already cut, please listen, we've already cut. We have nothing left to cut. And so, I do, I would be devastated for our district if our school committee didn't put our students first by voting what we feel those students need for their education. I, I don't think we should be cutting.
I'm just responding to your statement about a middle of the path. I think there can't be three paths right now. I think it would just get too confusing. If we want another option, we would have to change version one, not version two. That's all I'm getting at.
And I think tomorrow is where we're gonna find out what are the pathways that are gonna happen.
Okay, my last one for right now. So I've been asked, because of the way that it was proposed as if this fails, what we would, what, where we would start to see cuts. I've been asked if we could, I know you're saying that you haven't met about this, actually detail it yet, but I've been asked to find out what that actually looks like when we say athletic is, athletics is gonna be impacted, music is gonna be impacted. Can you at least speak to, well, does that mean entire programs are gonna be cut? Or does that mean everything will have to take a hit?
Through the chair, again, our approach has always been to identify a value to a certain point, um, and then come up with either holes or amalgamations of certain other areas. Uh, so I work for the first meeting in May is to come in with an actual detailed list as to what that impact will look like. You know, I, I'd hate to throw out an example now because it may not be an example in, in two weeks. But you're, you're not wrong in saying, we have to describe exactly what that will look if we call it up to either a department or a teacher or, or what have you. We have to be very specific as to what that is. And that's the work that, again, we have to, to, to work with internally first, um, and then bring to the public at that first, to bring to you in the public, um, at that first meeting in May. And, and again, uh, Ms. Terry, you're absolutely right, it has to be specific and it will be specific.
And I think we need to remember that first meeting in May, we're talking about people's positions. And they're going to know that. And I think that that's, we need to provide the administration time to do that and do it right.
That's why I asked what I asked.
Yes.
I asked, you know, athletics and music, and those, that's what the students are concerned about. And so to provide some peace of mind to know, the intent isn't to completely decimate an entire athletic, um, department. I don't know what else to call it.
Experience.
Experience, thank you. It is to realize that everything is going to be, if we are not successful and we have to see this version two come to some reality, does that mean that everything will take some form of a hit, but it will not be decimated for an entire athletic experience? You can't speak to that even yet.
Nope. Well, again, I, as I said earlier, we're gonna, we're gonna look, try to look for a balanced approach to that.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna do the best we can. That's never gonna be perfect, but we're gonna do the best we can. We're gonna look at the, the developmental levels and the impact on teaching and learning and where our limited resources are. You know, if you recall at that Dudley Middle School meeting, there was a gentleman who suggested we, we, uh, reduce our staff that's not, uh, student-facing staff, and the response was, we don't have any of those. So, um, you know, we're really in a, in a tight spot, so we're gonna try to approach that from a balanced perspective. But we will be, I don't wanna say graphic detailed, we're, we're not gonna give social security numbers, but we're gonna give exactly what these things are that are going to be on the list to get to one point nine million dollars. And then the additional items that school committee can interplay with to say, this, this is a no-go for me, and the school committee votes as a whole and says, you've gotta change this, and then we put that in there, and it's, it's, it's going to be, it's gonna be, as you recall, as a committee, we've had, uh, places where we've reduced, have minimal reductions that impacted, that had large impacts to our district, and people came here to tell us that. So, one point nine million dollars is not a minimal reduction, it's a major reduction that will have, um, as we've been saying for, it feels like a year, but months, um, it will change the course of the student experience here to reduce our budget by one point nine million dollars. There's no choice here, but we will be very specific at the, at the May meeting. Principal Elwell, I think, wanted to, to throw something in.
Yes.
So just in general terms?
Can I come to the, can you come to the microphone?
Thanks for the assist. So, just in general terms, as I've had conversations with my administrative team, with my department coordinators, putting specific positions aside and reductions of personnel, when we talk about the impact of programs, most notably athletics, visual performing arts, our general philosophy, and I think this is the consensus among my, uh, leadership team, is that there will be shared sacrifice and that we would much prefer to see reductions from all as opposed to elimination totally of some of these programs. And so, our beginning stance will be shared sacrifice from all, reductions as opposed to total elimination. And I sense that that's an acceptable starting point when we think about some of the impacts to these programs.
That's exactly what I needed to hear, and I think that our citizens. That's exactly what I needed to hear, and I think that our citizens, specifically our students, needed to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Olivia?
Yeah, to, to add on to what Mr. Elwell said, a lot of students don't know that it's, like, we're hoping for a reduction instead of an elimination. A lot of the show choir students that I have talked to are like, show choir's gone, it's gone forever, and I'm, no, girl. Like, how, as the student representative, do I approach my friends, my peers, acquaintances that I'm like, yeah, this is happening, and you might not understand, like, all this stuff in this packet and all whatever's going on? And, like, tell them that your, your program is on the chopping block?
Olivia, I think that one of the things that I see my student government person doing at my school when things like that happen is that they have a mechanism where they can, can they, can you email out to all of your student body? Right.
Yeah, we, you know.
Maybe provide them, you know, not the link to the whole meeting, but maybe like some, some snippets of the meeting so that they can hear what we're saying. You know, let them know, come to the meeting on, on the ninth, correct? May ninth? Is that the Wednesday?
I think so.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
In the, in the packet, it says the 10th.
May 10th. Wednesday, May 10th.
Okay. I mean, you know, they're welcome to come to the meeting. As we get there, you know, we'll, we'll try to provide space and time for, to, to listen to. It's gonna be a very, it's gonna be a very tough meeting for all of us. And, you know, we want to make sure we, we hear from everyone, not just the students, the faculty, you know, our, our citizens, everyone. And I'm sure Mr. Elwell can find you a place that your voice can be heard.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
One more comment.
A few weeks ago, I attended the Shine Initiative at Shepherd Hill, and one of the key points that I took away from it was the presentation asked the students when, you know, especially after coming off the pandemic, when they're depressed, when they're anxious, what are their outlets with dealing with all of those? And there was multiple options that could be chosen, and the majority of the one that I went to was sports and music. So I think it's really important that we keep in mind that it's not necessarily the educational experience, being out on the field or on the stage, but that is a big outlet for these kids, especially coming off of the pandemic where most adults are dealing with many of those same depressed moods and anxiety and stuff like that, and that is an outlet, and that is so important for mental health. So it definitely needs to be a priority moving forward at the next budget.
Yeah, and I think it's really important, too, even at the middle school level, that we provide these types of experiences for our students so that, you know, it also equalizes the, the playing field for all our students, that we're providing these at a minimal cost to our students so that they can, everyone has the option to feel like they have a home in our district.
Definitely, and even from watching some of the cheerleaders at the Charlton Middle School and Dudley Middle School and then the high school, it, it bridged that gap between the middle schools. And eventually, they're all gonna be, not all, but the majority of them are gonna be at Shepherd Hill and possibly on the same team. And it was really nice to see the camaraderie between the three teams at multiple competitions that they went to, and it would be a shame that Dudley just started this program and possibly having to eliminate it. So I think that, I know that assessing the parents isn't going to cover all the fees, but I think that moving forward, we need to think about possibly increasing our, our fees if we do continue sports and music, and also charging fees at the middle school level to at least help with the funds for those programs. It's not going to cover it, but.
Can, can I say too, though, that I think we need to be very careful about equity and providing, you know, we have many of our students who are not able to fund those fees, and we wanna make sure we have mechanisms in place.
But there's programs that assist with that.
Right, that we have those in place to do that.
We do, right? We have John Pear Foundation.
Correct, and that, that people know about that, right. Sorry, we do, you know, we have the John Pear Foundation, there, you know, Dudley Charlton Educational Foundation has helped in, in the past with, with some of the things. But I think one of the things we need to keep in mind is that we have about, roughly, I believe it's thirty-four percent of low-income students here. So that's, you know, three out of every ten. You know, special ed's about eighteen percent, so two out of every ten. So they don't always have the same options, the same abilities, and they also don't have the same income. So it just seems a little weird hearing, well, maybe a smaller assessment, because, you know, many people paying smaller amount for the taxes to be able to accrue for a thirty-five-hundred, you know, student body versus, you know, the select student body to pay extra fees. It just seems a little off. I, I, I know it's not what you want, it's just, it's kinda how it came, so.
Yes, go ahead. Make a point. Thank you, Mr. Elwell, for mentioning that, you know, not a decimation of a complete program or anything, because I know it was brought forth to me that we're looking at families relocating their students or relocating themselves out of our communities just preemptively to, to hedge their bet, to say, well, maybe they're not getting rid of that program. This year, they'll decrease it minimally, but maybe next year it will be on the chopping block. You know, there are students going forward that, you know, they wanna finish their senior year in their sport or their, you know, whatever it is. And again, I've mentioned this before, that this might be their opportunity to go to college. You know, we've had students that, we have athletes that are in the NFL right now that come from Shepherd Hill, and who's to say that that next, you know, athlete isn't gonna come from this year or next year? And any, not just football, but I just think it's really important that we, you know, don't decimate any program, because otherwise, we're going to see a decrease in our population and our students, which it's, that's not gonna be a win for us either.
Right. Agreed. Okay. Do we have anything else in this area? No? Okay. So before we move to our executive session, why don't we?
You might want to take a vote to go into executive session after.
Yes, okay.
Recognition.
Okay.
Okay?
So.
So that way you don't have to come back to this table to go to that table.
I, I think, I think.
This has been a really tough meeting. We don't need to.
It has.
Take a break.
Thank you. Right, right. So we're gonna take a vote to go into an executive session, and when we do that, we're gonna take a brief five minutes before going into executive session to gather and recognize Jamie and thank her.
Thank you.
For all her contributions.
Very sweet.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to take a vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with, with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the Massachusetts Nurses Association, or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining with our non-union personnel director of finance and operations or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, only to reconvene into regular session to take votes if necessary and adjourn. And we will have to roll call. Jamie Delova?
Yes.
Okay. Kelly Dollar? Yes.
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 Okay, and we are now.